Okay, um, it is six thirty. I'd like to bring the Monday, December fifth meeting of the Manchester Select Board to order. Roll call vote. John Round.
Here.
Brian Solace.
Here.
Kathy Bellata.
Here.
Anne Harrison.
Here.
Becky Jakes. Got a full compliment. Congratulations. On being out with the living again. Thank you. At least among the vertical, not horizontal. So are there any public comments on non-agenda items from anybody in attendance? Limiting the time to two minutes, please.
Sarah Mallon.
Sarah Mallon, welcome back.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I was disappointed that I could not find a meeting packet on the website. For tonight, the last one I could find was from November seventh.
Okay, thank you. That's very unusual because Debbie usually gets them online. Is there anything we can do to assist Sarah this evening? Can we forward her?
I can forward.
Okay, Sarah.
Okay, thanks. I wanted to see the assessor information.
All right. Okay, uh, moving right along. I have no report at the moment. I've not been out and about. But thank you to John Round and Anne Harrison who represented the the Select Board at the Friendship Tree lighting yesterday. Thank you. And well attended, you all said.
Very well attended.
Yep, very disappointed not to be there. All right, tax classification hearing.
Moved over the hearing classification.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote. Anne Harrison.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
Brian Solace.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
And Becky says yes. Here we go.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Grant, the forty, and we have three people assesses for the town of Manchester. And tonight we have with us two board members of the Board of Assessors. We have Jeff McAvoy and we have Rob Beatty. Thank you. The purpose of the classification hearing is for the Select Board to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property and class five personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. In deciding the allocation, the Select Board must adopt the residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to the individual property classes according to Mass General Laws, chapter forty, section fifty-six. The Select Board must vote on the following in order to establish a tax rate. Number one, the classification, also known as shift of tax rate. Number two is a residential exemption. Number three is a small commercial exemption. And number four is open space discount. It is the responsibility of the assessors to provide the Select Board with relevant information and to discuss the fiscal effects of possible alternatives. So some salient facts about fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Every five years, the Department of Revenue closely audits the Assessor's Department, and that is called a certification year. The next certification year will take place in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. All of the fiscal years in between are called interim years. Fiscal year twenty-three was an interim year. So changes to valuation and the tables in those years are done through the interim year program. New growth, new growth in the single-family sector increased slightly from last year due to an increased number of building permits. New growth in commercial class decreased from previous years as we did not have any significant activity. Personal property growth increased slightly due to some second homes that were added to the tax base and to the utility appraisals that are now mandated by the state every year. You can see on the presentation a breakdown of new growth for fiscal year twenty-three. The overall amount was two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen, eighty-five percent of that came from the residential sector and fifteen percent from commercial, industrial, and personal property. Underneath that, there's a history dating back to two thousand and seventeen of new growth amounts, just to give you an idea of what the town saw in past years. The total taxable value for fiscal year twenty twenty-three is two billion, nine hundred and sixty-nine million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven, with ninety-three point eight percent of that in the residential sector and six point two percent commercial, industrial, and personal property. The tax levy limit calculation is below, and that is the fiscal year twenty-two levy limit to which we add two and a half percent increase plus new growth and any debt exclusions. We don't have any overrides, which bring us to the maximum permitted levy of thirty-one million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, oh, seven, where the actual fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three property tax levy is thirty million, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-two cents, which gives us an excess or unused levy capacity of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and eight cents. The tax rate is the tax levy divided by the town's taxable valuation. This is known as the uniform or single tax rate. Under this rate, each class of property pays a share of the tax levy equal to its share of the total town value. The tax rate rate used in this report is the projected fiscal year twenty-three tax rate of ten dollars and forty-three cents per thousand, while keeping in mind that this tax rate is pending the Department of Revenues approval. So the first item that we have to review is the classification. The Select Board may shift the town's tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor. This means the burden cannot be shifted more than fifty percent. And we have some worksheets in the second part of the presentation, which will explain the shift and and the effects of such shift. The second item is the residential exemption. The Select Board may adopt an exemption of up to thirty-five percent to shift the tax burden within the residential class from owners of moderately valued residential properties that are the principal residents of a taxpayer to higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residents of a taxpayer. This is not an actual exemption. But it is a shift of residential taxes to non-owner occupied property owners. This exemption was originally adopted by several Cape Cod communities as a means of forcing summer residents to pay a higher share of the tax levy than would year-round residents. Cities such as Cambridge, Somerville, and Boston have adopted the residential exemption because they have a significant amount of non-owner occupied multifamily properties such as apartment complexes. Since most residential property owners in this community consider Manchester by the Sea to be their principal residence, adoption of the residential exemption would only serve owners who are assessed value in under the average of one point two eight three million. And under.
Don't hit those.
Under.
Hit those over.
And it would hit those. Exactly. It would hit those over. So not such an expensive community where a large majority of the residential properties are owner occupied. It places an unjustified additional burden in those residences. And the scenario is listed under the worksheet in the second part of the presentation. Small commercial exemption. This exemption is similar to the residential exemption above. The exemption is beneficial to communities with a high presence of large commercial properties because it shifts the burden within a commercial class from small businesses valued at a million dollars with an average with an annual average of ten or less employees during the previous calendar year, to larger ones and to parcels in the industrial class. In order for a commercial parcel to qualify, every business occupying a parcel must also qualify for the exemption. Since most businesses in Manchester by the Sea are small, we would not see a relief in taxes. We would see an additional tax burden to larger commercial and industrial properties. Some examples of communities who have adopted this exemption are Avon, Braintree, Somerset, and Westford. Assessors may determine annual employment from a sole proprietorship or partnership. For all other businesses, they must rely solely on the determination of the Director of Labor and Workplace Development. An annual application process is required concerning payroll information, and we have a scenario explained under worksheets. And the last item for tonight is the open space discount. This discount may reduce the amount of the tax levy paid by the open space class to no less than seventy-five percent of its full and fair cash share of the levy, which means it will allow a discount of up to twenty-five percent. The Select Board by an annual vote may allow for a discount for all class-two open space properties. Adopting an open space discount lowers the open space tax rate because of the amount, because the amount of the levy paid by the class is reduced. Those taxes are shifted to the residential class alone, which means a higher residential tax rate. Of the three hundred and fifty-one communities, nineteen classified property as open space, mostly in the western part of the state, Ashland, Bedford, Berlin, Beverly, and and some others. In conclusion, historically, Manchester by the Sea has retained a uniform rate with a residential factor of one. At the end of the presentation, the Select Board would have to vote on those four items and sign the LA five, which will be uploaded into the DOR's Gateway System tomorrow morning as part of the tax rate setting process. The next page has some information for fiscal year twenty-three compared to fiscal twenty-two. Average residential value is one point two eight three this year, up from one point two three nine last year. The average single family is one point four million this year. It was one point three three four last year. Based on the calculations above, the increase from last year to this year, based on the average residential assessment of one point two eight three million, taxes are going up two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents with a tax rate decrease around one point six percent from ten dollars and sixty cents to ten dollars and forty-three cents per thousand. The next page is a list of terminology information. And if you turn to page nine, we're going to go through the worksheets. And you will see on the first the first page with the pie graphs, the tax levy broken down by class or sector. So you'll see residential ninety-three point eight one eight three percent, commercial three point six one four nine, industrial one point one nine one nine, and personal property two point three seven four percent. If you turn to the next page, this is the first shift scenario. If we want to shift the rate from residential to commercial, industrial, and personal property, you can see the rate at the very top under one hundred percent, ten dollars and forty-three cents. We're shifting the rate ten percent, twenty percent, forty and fifty percent. You can see the tax rate going down to ten dollars and thirty-six cents, ten twenty-nine, sixteen, ten oh nine. Meanwhile, the commercial, industrial, and person, personal property rates are going up from ten forty-three to eleven forty-seven, twelve fifty-two, fourteen sixty. Underneath that, you can see the difference in the tax levy decreasing for residential by a hundred and ninety-five thousand, twenty dollars. If we were to shift by twenty percent, decreasing by three hundred and ninety thousand, forty dollars. If you go further down, you can see the increase for commercial, industrial, and personal property going up at a shift of a hundred, ten percent, a hundred and eleven thousand, twenty percent, two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Where you really see the difference is on the next page. So worksheet on page number eleven. At the top, and the rate is shifting ten percent, the average residential property would see a reduction of eighty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. But the increase to the commercial industri, commercial and industrial class would be eight hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-six cents. And if you look at the maximum shift of fifty percent under residential, the reduction would be four hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. But the increase on the average commercial property would be four thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. That's the big burden to put on small businesses and towns. Um, the next, the next worksheet is regarding the residential exemption. The maximum exemption is thirty-five percent, and it's a set amount. So it's thirty-five percent of the average residential property, not thirty-five percent of each assessed property. So the maximum is four hundred and forty-nine dollars, three hundred and fifty-six, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So effectively, the shift, what it does is it shifts the residential tax burden to the top one-fourth in value of owner occupied parcels and to non-owner occupied rental units throughout the town. Because most of the properties are owner occupied, we would actually see an increase in the tax rate for everybody. It would not work in a town like Manchester because these exemptions were meant for second homes, rental properties, apartments, that sort of thing, where owner occupied properties are few and are mostly in larger cities. And the next worksheet is regarding small commercial exemption. So each year we receive a list from the state of properties that the town, that the Department of Revenue feels would qualify for a small exemption, small commercial exemption. The full and fair cash value of the properties that were qualified are eight million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Ten percent exemption is eight hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars per parcel. So what that would do is it would increase the commercial tax rate from ten dollars, forty percent to ten dollars and fifty-one cents. So for a small business, let's say valued at a hundred and nineteen thousand, it would be a hundred and seven dollars reduction in the, in the taxes. But if we were to look at a larger property, three point nine million, it would increase taxes by three hundred and twelve thousand. Historically, Manchester by the Sea has not adopted this exemption. And the last page, the last page of the packet is the open space discount. We currently do not have any property class by the open space. This is not applicable. If we did classify land as open space, it would grant an exemption percentage voted on by the Select Board each year, not to exceed twenty-five percent, thus shifting the tax burden onto the rest of the residential properties in town. Adopting an open space discount lowers the open space tax rate because the amount of the levy paid by the class is reduced. Those taxes are shifted to the residential class alone, which means the residential tax rate would be. And that is the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very thorough. Thank you all. John Round, any questions?
Lot of numbers here. Question. This form LA thirteen for new growth.
Yeah.
That, that, what does that drive? That drives the total valuation or the increasing valuation or what does that?
The LA thirteen is a list of the new growth valuation using last year's tax rate and then putting a value onto that particular sector. So when you look at a new growth, you see, I think we have that with me. You'd like to take a look at it. It's a breakdown of new growth by class.
Okay. I mean, there's an increase in valuations here, and that's largely driven by.
The increase in valuation are due to sales.
Well, that's purely driven by, driven by.
And improvements.
No, these are two different.
And building prices.
Different buckets.
Right.
So you've got new growth, which is new construction.
Okay, all right. That's, that's the confusion.
We had, we had about twenty million dollars worth of new construction.
Right.
Okay.
And that yielded two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
So make an assumption next year it's going to be X or something.
Right. But this was a little higher than what we had estimated when we put the budget together.
And then the other assumption for increase in valuations is based purely on sales?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you look under the terminology page on the presentation, it explains new growth subject to taxation for the first time. New articles of personal property, usually exempt property.
Which page is that? Which page is that?
Page eight.
Okay.
Taxed as a separate parcel for the first time, such as subdivisions, condo conversions. It's an increase in assessed valuation over prior year due to construction activity, but not due to a revaluation program.
Okay.
So that's the difference.
So overall, that total, total valuation of the town went up little, right around five percent. But almost a percent of that was new growth.
Right.
So, so you take that away, subtract that out, so values went up about four percent based on sales, based on sales data. And we were aiming for two and a half percent increase in taxation. But if properties go up four percent.
More so that.
The, the rate actually drops. So that's why you see the rate dropping.
Are higher, so your taxes are still going. Okay.
So taxation is a function of value times rate. So the rate went down about one, one point six percent. Values went up right around rounding four percent, which yields that out of your pocket another two and a half percent.
Assuming it stays two and a half.
Brian?
Not just the, the new growth, that's based on permits? So whatever.
But it's actual construction.
Right.
Yeah. So, but yes, obviously it stems from permits.
Something that has not been taxed before.
But the value of the, the property is determined by.
Sales.
Okay. Still sales. Yep.
For residential, for commercial, we have to broke our income and expense forms. These is rents. Type of valuation.
Thank you.
Kathy, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Anne? The increase in valuation from sales is just overall sales prices were up four percent without considering different types of categories of real estate.
Overall.
All residential.
Was for the town for twenty-seven percent, so rounding up to five percent. I do have a breakdown of these reasons, so I can just give you some examples. So single-family homes were up five percent. Condominiums were up three percent. Two-family homes were up seven percent. Three-family homes were up ten percent. And we just have some small outbuildings like warehouses and things like that. So according to the classification that we use for all of the different properties, we have different.
So, so a three-family house would, okay.
Yep, so a three-family house.
Yes, you would answer that. Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up question. So what, what's the end number for sales? This is not a big town. How many, how many sales were involved in two thousand?
How many sales were involved? So we have non-arms-length transactions and we have arms-length transactions. I don't have the breakdown in front of the day. I'm going to say we had about sixty-five arms-length transactions, and the rest were all either estate sales or, you know, something to do with divorce, private sales, that sort of thing.
Is the board ready to vote?
I move that we accept the nomination of the Board of Assessors and set the residential.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ryan Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Thank you all very much.
No, we're not done. We're not done. We. I move that we.
Thank you.
Accept the recommendation of the Board of Assessors and decline to invoke the residential exemption.
So. Moved by Anne Harrison, second Brian Solace. Roll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. And now we have.
Pretty small commercial. I will, we decline to invoke this law exemption.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, second Brian Solace. Roll call vote. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes.
Do we have to go when we make these votes if we don't matter? Okay. I move that we decline to take advantage of the open space discount.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote. Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Thank you very much. That was Becky.
I will leave the LA five with Gray on administrative break. If you have a chance, if you could sign. Thank you.
So we could do it.
We can do it.
Hard copy. We don't have to do it online.
We have to upload it.
Okay.
We have to upload a copy of that. We have to upload a copy of the time document.
It was an enormous amount of work, and the fact that we didn't discuss it is a great comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it was really, it was so easy to follow, clear, it was, thank you.
Thank you.
Almost understood all of it.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the alcohol, good evening, um alcohol license renewals and seasonal population. Okay.
If you weren't close to hearing.
Say again.
Close.
Uh for Pete's sake, okay. Yes.
The connection rate.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes, thank you, Debbie, very much. Donkey, donkey, then.
Yes, what is seasonal population?
Thank you. That was going to be my question.
Um it's just the seasonal population from I can't remember what, I don't have the form in front of me from.
It's an estimate.
Just an estimate.
What you think the summer population goes to. So the state does this.
Every year.
As part of their assessment of how many liquor licenses you should have, based on population.
Okay.
So for towns that have a high, very high seasonal. You would be.
Thank you.
No, and I.
They leave here, they don't stay.
Okay, there was one thing on that that I wanted to ask about. And in one note, it said that we were renewing annual licenses for thirteen establishments, but three. Eleven, at twelve?
Two didn't.
Thirteen.
Two are not renewing.
Okay. All right.
But the MAC, because they're going for a new license for a new owner, and you still had a license for porn affairs at twenty-six Central Street. So we gotta get rid of that one.
And we have fourteen here, though.
The fourteen altogether here?
Yeah, right?
Fourteen, you're up.
Okay, so I did. Just wanted to make sure.
There's two that are not renewed.
Not a big deal. I just didn't, no, 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 I didn't, I didn't know if there was.
The ones you have are the ones that are getting renewed.
Okay, perfect. Um. All right. Um, do we have any questions on any of the licenses? Don, Brian, Kathy, Anne? Okay, and. Kind of one question. And it was that it some of them, for example, um at Singing Beach Club since the seasonal closing. Um. And some did, does that? I know we'll do the B and T later.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that. I did not see.
They they usually do it in the spring.
Okay.
Um. But if that just do they need to be said? I mean, that's.
You mean?
I don't recall seeing that before. Have they said that in the past?
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty. Uh may I have a motion?
You could have a question with Sarah Milisch.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, this is a generic, this is a generic question. Are you only?
As a member of the public?
Yes. Are you only approving the alcohol licenses at this time and the entertainment licenses are done separately?
Yes, these are just alcohol.
And when are the entertainment licenses done?
They'll be coming along soon. They just got mailed out.
Okay.
Remember, beginning of December, so.
Because I have concerns about the American Legion Entertainment License. I believe they went beyond the constraints of what was allowed.
What number Bennett are you, Sarah?
Pardon?
What number Bennett are you?
Eleven.
There you go. Thank you.
Next to the big dig. To do more blasting next week.
Buckle up. Okay. Any other question?
Yes.
Yeah, so uh is I assume there is a differential between seasonal and full-year licenses?
Yes.
I assume there's some.
For the alcohol?
For for alcohol, yeah.
Yeah, seasonals are from April first to January fifteenth.
So they pay less?
That that's really my question, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I think it's slightly less. My memory. You can double check.
Uh it must be something they're saying seasonal, and if it was costing the same amount, they just filed for a regular.
I think it's the same. I haven't seen any. Is it cheaper for seasonal? I haven't seen any.
I thought it was, but I can.
Okay.
Double check.
Yeah.
And do we define seasonal or do they define seasonal?
The dates?
Yeah.
The state.
Pardon me?
Does.
The state, oh, the state does.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um I think on the applica, on the renewal form, it says that the premises are now open for business if not explained. So if you're seasonal, you're not open now. So they'd have to explain.
Right. You're not gonna get, you're not gonna see the seasonals now. Anyway, they'll come out in March.
We have to. That shouldn't happen. The yacht club is.
They're saying seasonal on you?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's on Singing Beach, and then the yacht club says, yeah, right here under, I think they do their federal federal ID, right?
Some of the classes in the seasonal are separate when I saw that these two.
Yeah.
Oh, even in the licensed class at the, on the where they, yeah. Yeah, because this is all says annual.
Singing Beaches, they know, they they wrote.
Right.
They're rolling over, then they say they're open seasonally.
So that.
They're going there, they have an annual license.
That's, I, yeah, I thought in the past we just did annual.
Yeah, annuals are in December. Yeah, seasonals will come out in March.
Which is what the bath and tennis does. I mean, that's why they've always been separate, or since I've been doing this.
So the two that are in here are really annual.
Really annuals.
Even though they're saying they're not open year.
Right, right, because their class through the state is an annual license. That's why I got them in October.
Okay, all right, so.
Well, I think their seasons are more extended than the bath and tennis anyway. I don't know if the state use it differently. I don't need to, okay. Any other questions, comments? I mean, it's the application they've submitted, so. All right.
So they're all annual. Yep.
Um, may I have a motion to approve?
All the applications presented to us.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, second Kathy Bellata, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Look, Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes, thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have recall of the special act request. Um.
Uh do we need to approve?
Oh, wait.
Seasonal population.
Seasonal, yes.
Yeah. Move to town to seasonal population, increase estimation for an provision.
Second.
Uh moved Ann Harrison, second Kathy Bellata, roll call vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes. Well, thank you. So with the special act, um we need to vote to ask our state legislators to sponsor a special act establishing a recall provision for locally elected officials as we have here. Did everybody get a chance to read it over and verify that? Greg, do we need to modify any of this, or is this exactly how it gets submitted?
No, it should be submitted as as it is, yes.
Okay.
That's what the county voted for.
Well, I mean, this, the 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 copy that was true copy attached. All right, um. Anybody have any questions or comments? You have a vote? I mean, um motion, please?
To ask our, I move to ask our, the legislature. Um. To sponsor. Sponsor um the article which was presented as Article Three in the town meeting.
And just if I might make a friendly addition to that, a recall provision for locally effect elected officials. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says, yes. Pine Street Speed Zone. Hey. Is that what we have? Right. Um. Greg, do you want to?
Go, so we. We discussed speeds on Pine Street, in particular, the length of the twenty-mile power zone being longer when um necessary, it is really designed as a special speed zone, safety zone at the, in and around the senior housing at Newport Park, rather than start up if it goes perfectly. And so uh the recommendation is that that speed zone be a quarter of a mile from the intersection of Bridge and uh Bridge and Pine um and Central, that, and Bennett, complicated intersection. So going a quarter mile up would be the length of the twenty-mile power zone.
So where does that end? Where is a quarter mile? Does it end at like Pleasant Street, or does it end?
No, it's it's before, it's near Wood Hall.
So um.
It's basically.
From the Wood Hall.
Basically from Central to Wood Hall, yes, yes. So just beyond the Newport Park entrance. So then the uh rest of the, so then was currently a twenty-mile from Wood Hall up to Pleasant would be twenty-five. Twenty-five would continue up uh just before you get to the highway. And then it becomes thirty-five.
Well, that's another, that that would, thank you for clarifying. That's why my question regarding the information that was submitted. I wasn't sure if police chief was also suggesting that we increase the speed limit from twenty-five to thirty-five on Upper Pine where it's more um rural. Keeping. Right now it's twenty-five all the way till it gets to be forty right before the highway. So the the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit comment here was confusing to me.
I thought it was thirty-five there.
No.
Thirty-five on School Street. I'm up and down this thing every day, month. It's thirty-five on School Street.
Gotcha.
After the highway.
Yes.
And but on Pine Street, it's forty. So I wasn't sure if he was recommending upping it from twenty-five to thirty-five, or so I was confused.
Um. I I just, quick question. Jim, was your question about um something prior to this, or you hear about the Pine Street?
Uh my question would be about Pine Street.
Okay, we'll come back to you then.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um.
So I don't think we were proposing any changes to currently on the Upper Pine. This was just focused on that safety zone.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Have we considered any traffic calming? Uh that's a very wide world. And it could have a protective bike lane and reduce people's tendency to speak. Has any, has that been considered?
But yes, it has been considered. It's it's something we're waiting for more formal discussion and and the yay or nay on your part. So if you're interested in having that, then we could develop that a little further and present it to you.
Yes, can can, I'm glad you brought it up, Anne, because uh there's been a lot of conversation around traffic calming, especially with the new Pine Street field going in and Upper Pine. And when we had the conversation on September seventh around traffic on Pine, what we were specifically discussing was not necessarily just speeding, it was road rage and people driving on the wrong side of the road because the speed limit is too small for the width of the road. So options include narrowing the road, as Anna's suggesting, or increasing the speed limit. And when a, with a field going in in Upper Pine, increasing the speed limit may not be the best option. Um but I do think, given the field, you know, new factor that we did not really discuss in depth, we should have a serious discussion as possible, understanding the options and the cost.
Well, we we seem to come back to this discussion more than annually. Um and the speed, speed in general throughout town, um but I think primarily on Pine Pine Street. Um. And I know like Kathy, I I as well have on that road daily, and if I'm doing the speed limit, I have people right on my tail, very unhappy, and they will zip around me and go by. Um. Now, I I, when when we have had, is Todd on this?
He had a class this evening, but Mark, Mark McCoy.
Mark's on, okay. Um. Because we did have um somebody wrote in suggesting that we write more tickets. And I know we've gone back and forth with this with the police department as well. Um but I I think that that we need to come up with some measures and actually implement and adhere.
I think given that we have a a field go, field going in.
Yep.
Which is a practice field, so it's going to attract younger kids.
Mm-hmm.
It would be strongly in everyone's interest to put in a bike lane, at least from the field to Central Street. There was, like, a big question, painting, and perhaps putting in some followers.
Yep. But I think the options should absolutely be looked at. I fully support some type of bike lane. Something to consider is that on Lower Pine, where I live, um the residents rely on the parking. So so we have.
Parking and bike and road.
Right, I'm just saying, I absolutely support it. We just, um, there's also the balance of not losing parking spaces, um which are at a premium, but I I think a bike lane would be wonderful. If Boston can do it, Little Manchester.
Well, and even, but but down at Lower Pine, it also shifts a little. So you you're coming at it in the road shift. Um after we talk, I'd like to hear from um Bike Pad, who I'm sure has some really a lot of very good insight. And I know Jim Dietrich wants to say something, but um so we'll go to the board first. Uh Brian?
I understand the uh the bike lane.
I understand, uh, the bike lane, uh, my only concern was, you only have road, one road lined up for bike lane. So if I go when, when they end, now they'll vote, okay. Uh, but that's, you know, it's better than nothing, I suppose. I'm an advocate of raising the speed limit to five miles. We'll deal with the, uh, when, when the time comes with the Upper Pine, the, uh, field, we'll look at it then. At this point, even if it's a ninety day trial, all it is is changing the signs. And, uh, we'll take a look at it. I just, I think that, uh, it's twenty miles an hour, it's just painfully slow on, on Pine Street.
John?
So isn't there, I'm, I'm mostly interested in going from Pleasant up to this new ball field. Isn't there a bike lane on there already, northbound?
Not an official bike.
It's, it's a wide, it's a wide, I'm on a bicycle on that all the time. And I know it's there, and I, I, I always thought it was just, it was a bike line. And so we, we have one, whatever, has to, how it, how it has to be redefined, we never let, have the space at least on one side of the road. I mean, if you had on one on either side, I think that's a problem in terms of the, the width of the road then for travel. But there, there is one on that. Um, what, what was the eighty fifth percentile for speed? Did we look at that up in that upper part of Pine Street? Or was it just on the lower part?
Uh, they do have that, I don't have that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I.
I don't know if Mike has that.
I, I am in favor of making that twenty five miles an hour. Um, we can revisit that once a field been put in there, but we all know the timelines kind of shift around and.
It is twenty five up there.
It is, it's, it goes, it starts a little past the cemetery, past Pleasant Street, that's when it switches to twenty five.
Just past the cemetery?
Yep. Yeah.
That's, once you get that four way stop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it's twenty five until you get almost across from Rockwood Heights, and it goes.
I, I, I know where the four, forty sign is. So the only twenty five thing we're talking about is really from just below Woodhull to.
To.
Uh, the cemetery. Whatever the story is. Okay. I'm up and down that road four or five times a day.
Yeah.
I drive the same speed no matter what the story is, and I will continue. And it's not what, it's not twenty. But I hadn't been behind you, Becky, yet, so. Um, but I'm.
A lot of not happy people have.
What might be the purpose?
And maybe that explains, I've never had anybody try and pass me, and I, it's not like I'm going thirty five or forty miles an hour or not, but, um, maybe I go fast enough that it doesn't antagonize people.
No, I'm, I'm doing twenty two, I just.
Okay.
So I think the.
Different category.
I was only speaking about Upper Pine. I didn't, um, make a comment about the proposal in front of us to increase the speed limit from twenty to twenty five, and in that Lower Pine section, I do agree with that. Um, I do think it'll cut down on the road rage, and, um, and I think the goal here is to get the speed limits and the road width aligned. And then, once we get those aligned, then if things are still not in good shape, then the enforcement should be stepped up. That's kind of where my head is at. But right now, the, in my mind, the road width and the speed limits are not aligned, so stepping up enforcement is, we have a, one more thing to do before we do them.
Well, and, and with everything, you know, there, there is usually a lot more to how we got here. And, um, complete streets came into play with this. Um, so why don't we, are we okay to open a half bike pit? All right.
Good evening.
Howman.
Some comments, and I'm not representing the bike pit this evening, because we haven't had a vote on this material. About some facts about Pine Street, you know, to be Surf Village, by the way. Heard a lot of good comments tonight, I think they're right on. Good work. Appreciate your, your involvement.
Thank you, Terry.
I would seven tenths of a mile from Button Street to the left bridge. So if we're talking about moving it quarter mile up to, half a mile, it would be reduced from, or increased from twenty to twenty five, I guess, which looks. If we say twenty, cars are currently going to, if we say twenty five, cars would be thirty five. With that sort of latitude and leeway and the current scenarios, and Kathy points out, the real issue is the street itself, it's wide, it's straight, it's in pretty good shape. There's extra room in the travel lanes for any kind of vehicles that are going to be coming up Pine Street. And ultimately, that has to be addressed. So the way the road is built, it encourages speed. The entire link, that seven tenths of a mile is one of the densest sections in Manchester, because not only do you have Pine Street itself, which there are fifty seven driveways.
How many?
Fifty seven between Pleasant and, uh, Ridge Street. There are also seven streets that enter Pine Street in that same seven tenths of a mile. So there are approximately sixty seven residences right on Pine Street, but if you go on any of the side streets, Woodhull, et cetera, you'll find another two hundred residents that are empty on the Pine Street. That includes not only adults, but kids trying to get to school from that side of town. And bus service doesn't extend the full way. So they're with mom and dad or biking or walking to school. Um, if you include the area above, um, Pleasant Street, go all the way up to Rockwood Heights and that area, you had another seventy some odd residents in seven and five that also empty on the Pine Street. And would be coming into town on Pine Street too. Now, I'm not going to say that I drive twenty miles an hour on Pine Street. Try to keep it under twenty five. That's usually when I'm on a bike, I try to keep it under twenty five. I'm usually successful, but it's downhill, so that means we kind of go a little faster sometimes. So I understand that there's that, uh, kind of impetus for speed, particularly coming into town as we, uh, exit one twenty eight. I think the real question for us is what kind of towns are we interested in promoting? Are we interested in promoting vehicles and traffic moving as quickly as possible based that sets up a certain sort of design prioritization? If we're interested in orienting ourselves towards pedestrians, uh, walkers, runners, cyclists, and so forth, and making the town not only safe, but sort of a healthy approach to, uh, the citizenry, then we think about the priorities a little bit differently, and that's where calming devices come into play, and our DPW is very familiar with any kind of calming device that's out there. Raised surfaces at intersections, crosswalks, bollards, really narrowing the, the travel surface on the road would, would be significant. And if you look at the handouts, you see really what's behind this whole thing. At thirty miles an hour, the, uh, fatality and serious injury risk, I've seen it as high as fifty percent in some surveys, the first one from Walk Boston, forty percent severe injuries or fatality at thirty miles an hour. And that's the speed cars are going at currently, the posted speed limit is twenty. So if we bump it up another five, we're probably looking at thirty five to forty, and now the accident rate severity is a fifty fifty proposition. At least, and maybe even lower on some of that. The, uh, secondhand out shows what happens where most accidents fatalities occur and what speeds, and it's between thirty and thirty five miles an hour. Which is exactly what we're kind of promoting here by increasing the speed limit from twenty to twenty five miles an hour. So we're making the town more dangerous. And I think the order of priority here might be shifted towards looking at the street and then the road surface itself, and figuring out how to calm traffic first, and then kind of thinking of speed as a factor in relation to that. That's my two cents.
I have actually a comment, I thought, um, the last time we talked about this, Chuck Dan, you know, with, and the, and the police chief. When the speed limit was twenty five, the, um, eighty fifth percentile was about thirty two. When the speed went to twenty, the eighty fifth percentile went, went up two or three miles an hour. So the lower speed limit did not make people go slower. And, and, and that's what has brought this to our attention again.
Yes, and there's a few issues there. Um, enforcement, certainly one of them, there's almost no enforcement of the current speed limit. And I think our police will tell you, they don't really bother ticketing or stopping someone until they exceed the speed limit by ten miles an hour. So that means, now, why does it go up instead of down? Um, I really don't know the psychology of the whole thing, but I, I know the road itself encourages that kind of speed, so it's, it's pissed off, and they're trying to make a point.
I think people are really, I'm sorry to kind of back and forth for you, but Becky, I think people are see the, the twenty mile an hour speed limit is unreasonable, and, and just ignore it completely, whereas we may hope that a twenty five mile an hour speed limit would seem annoying, but rational. And, and might.
I agree with that. It, it, it could be that way, but I think generally speaking, not specifically Pine Street, if, if you look at what happens when the speed limit goes up, people exceed it by about ten miles an hour. So we're looking at thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, thirty five, and that's where we enter that danger zone of accident. So through a combination of enforcement, education, and maybe a little bit of, uh, you know, reward type behavior along with road design, that would really address the issue where we got ahead longer term, so.
I've got a, a question with the, with the data, and I, I recall them discussing that data a year ago or something like that. Did they look at the individual points? I'm just wondering about the distribution of speed, because road rage becomes a bigger deal when you've got twenty miles an hour. And if you've got some cars that are now going forty because they're trying to get around somebody, and there are more people going forty to try and get around somebody, that get recorded as that. So there aren't very many cars, but the few cars that are, are doing at a faster rate. Full average looks like it's going up, but really it's just a few cars that I'm not following Becky anymore. I'm going to drive around. And, and that might be, that might be what's contributing to that, and.
Well, we have, um, Mark McCoy, and Jim, go ahead and mute yourself. I'll come back to you. Um, but if you'd go ahead and mute yourself for the time being, that'd be great. Um, Mark, do you have any comments, uh, Mark McCoy from our local constabulary?
I think our, um, I stated earlier, the average speed limit from the, uh, speed study we did back in January of two thousand twenty one, the average speed was thirty two miles an hour, and the eighty fifth percentile was thirty seven miles an hour. Our, there's been no accidents to speak of in that area, but definitely our road rage incidents have been higher, has been more reported road rage incidents.
In addition, um, I'm wondering, um, Mark, if you, on, on that, on, on Pine Street.
Yeah.
If there are, is any, uh, are there more, more, um, stops, citations, warnings on Pine Street than there are on other streets?
Um, our traffic enforcement townwide has been on an increase. Our refs are up, um, our OUIs are up, and that all comes back to our traffic enforcement. There has been a significant increase in traffic enforcement on Pine Street.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add one more point, we've all experienced in the pandemic, and this is true both locally and nationally, that speeds are up. When the density of traffic reduced during the pandemic, people started driving faster, and the incidence of road rage have increased on every highway in the country, including our own town streets as a result of, you know, the last couple, three years of lockdown. So any statistics that we look at for speed at this point in time, have to kind of take into account the, uh, social.
Well, and one, one last thing I, I'd like to say is, okay, so we, we established a speed limit of twenty, and so now because people are going even faster and they don't like it, so now we say, okay, well, let's up the speed limit a little bit and see if they like that. I'm, I'm not convinced that that is the right tact, however, um, I'm one of all. And so if more people feel that it's a, a better option, I think to look at, um, potentially increasing the speed. That's one thing, but I, I do, um, I do really like the idea of looking at, as has been laid out here. Do we, do we reduce the width of the travel lane? Do we look at bike lanes? Do we ask our DPW to come in with, again, with some very.
Yeah, I, can I make a suggestion? Um, I think we've discussed a lot of the options here. Um, we do think there's a difference between Upper Pine and Lower Pine. In terms of density, in terms of proposed solutions, they should be the same, they could be different. Um, I would like the DPW to come back here with a comprehensive set of options for safety, which can include, not limit, we don't want to limit their creativity, right? But we could include a bike lane, there's, there's room for it, and I believe Ann used the word protected bike lane as opposed to just the little white lines that were in the road, right? A protected bike lane, um, and whatever other good traffic calming measures um, they can, um, come up with, with the goal of the width of the role being appropriate for a posted speed limit, and their, their, their options should include changing the speed limits. Um, so that things match. Right now, things don't match.
Exactly.
And I don't know how long that will take, but I hope it's not long. Um, and in the meantime, I am wondering if we can, um, move forward with the chief's recommendation of just in that one small section of Lower Pine, changing it to twenty five because we're not going to be implementing any type of protected bike lane in the next few weeks. Um, so personally, I'd like to move forward with that.
Just another comment on that. I don't know how many of you, I'm driving, I run down Pine Street, I'm not looking at this law. Okay, I'm going where I think is a safe speed, and invariably, when I do look down, it's twenty four to twenty six miles an hour. And I think that that, because that's what seems to be proper for that area. So I think to raise it to twenty five, and, and also at the same time, do, you know, currently and, and look at other options. I don't think there's any reason to delay the, the, the raising of the speed limit for the, the chief's, um, recommendations.
And I, I would, I would add the last suggestion he, he makes here, which is a good one, is then do a speed study. Put that up there. Let's find out what's going on. So I, I, I'm kind of like, uh, Brian is to a certain extent. I'm not paying attention. I feel what the right speed is. For me, well, it's a little high. It's around thirty, twenty nine, thirty, okay? And that's what I go pretty much without even looking, that's.
I'm going to let you drop out of town, because I'll get out of town three minutes earlier.
I guess so. But, um, he should, uh, put up some sort of a, some sort of a monitoring system, because I'm curious what the story is. People are all curious whether that's going to make a difference.
Okay, I'm, yep, no way. Um, I understand that it is the police policy not to stop people who are doing less than ten miles an hour over the speed limit. And I understand that that's based on courts throwing out cases, but we don't go to court. We give warnings, we stop people. But if we, if we use a fixed ten miles per hour rather than say twenty percent of the speed limit, then we are letting people go thirty in a quarter zone and thirty five in a twenty five zone. And I understand that this is uniform police policy in the state, but I think maybe we ought. And I understand that this is uniform police policy in the state, but I think maybe we ought to look at. Probably from our point of view rather than everybody else.
There's a, there's standards and there are pragmatic implementation of standards. And we are a small town, as we often like to say, and and standards need to be adapted to to work well, I think, in in a town like this.
Well, okay to open up to public comment? Okay, um, Jim Dietrich, go ahead and put your hand down and unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As some of you may know.
Being so patient.
Say again?
Thank you for being so patient, Jim.
Patience comes with being on the zoning board.
Address, please.
As some of you may know, prior to the state giving us permission to raise speed limits. Um, I delivered to s- to the select board, I think, prior to the pandemic, let me. Kill that, thank you. I delivered to the select board a petition of all the people who live on Lower Pine Street. Asking that the speed limit be increased or decreased to um thirty, twenty five to thirty miles an hour. I don't know who still may remember that, but that was the consensus of opinion of people living there because there are a lot of children and a lot of bicycles. And um twenty miles an hour is probably too low. However, the enforcement on the part of our police department is terrible. They do not enforce large vehicles early in the morning. You never see them out there. Uh, the trucks that are coming to deliver goods to Crosby's and other businesses in town go much faster. And I know this because I live at ninety Pine Street. And just down the street from me is the radar speed limit sign, which clearly displays how fast these trucks are going. And they're going a lot faster than thirty miles an hour. So raising the speed limit to thirty and doing nothing about enforcement is not going to solve our problem. The street maybe need to be narrowed, we may do do to put in bike lanes, we may have to do a lot of things, but right now, the speed limit is too low. Third, twenty five would be appropriate, but unless the police start doing their job and going after the trucks. Particularly dump trucks and construction vehicles that go a lot faster past my house, because I'm out there in the morning putting up my flag, looking around. And if I had a radar gun, I'll bet you they're going a lot faster, and the sign says they are. So if the police would simply enforce the law, it would be much better. I know we have to do a lot of other things, but they're down with the road. Right now, we have to deal with the speed limit. What's it gonna take, a child to be struck by a large truck before we open our eyes and take action? Thank you.
Okay, and Jim, would you please um state your address?
Certainly, I live at ninety Pine Street, and my name is James Dietrich, and I've been a resident of this town since two thousand eight. Thank you.
Very much, Jim. Um, Greg, there's a comment in the chat. You see that? Ah, it's from, okay.
Late twenty seventeen, early twenty eighteen, the minute I moved to Edinburg.
Right, it's from Mark, it's about um just the the speed limit. Re, um, I think reiterating what he told us. So let me see how I close this out now, or there we go. Mark, did you want to um make any comments?
Uh, no, just uh to reiterate what I was talking about before. Our our uh traffic and speed enforcement is up all over town. I can't specifically say um Pine Street, but I'll make sure to relay that to the midnight shift in the. Eight to four shift early in the morning from Mr. Dietrich.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Yeah, when I'm, usually when I'm leaving, I I'm I'm aware of the trucks going a lot more quickly as well. And just just traffic in general, people, general people trying to. Get where they feel they have to be more expeditiously than probably is necessary. And I I I will say, you know, one person twenty four to twenty six or or perceived thirty or so safe speed. Still not the speed limit. So what might seem safe for one person. Is not always across the board. Okay, I'll go to uh Mr. Cowman.
How many seconds difference did it make going from Pleasant to the end of the street? At twenty miles an hour versus thirty miles an hour?
Exactly.
Forty two. So we're saving forty two seconds by going thirty miles an hour versus twenty. If that's worth it. Bump it up.
Uh, Sarah Malish?
Yes, I just want to say that I think twenty miles an hour is way too slow. I think it's so slow that I become a distracted driver. Instead of paying attention to what I'm doing, I'm looking around because I'm going so slowly. So I think an increase to twenty five miles an hour makes enormous amount of sense.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Saunders, unmute yourself, please, and state your name and address.
Thank you, David Saunders, fifty eight Pleasant Street. Uh, thank you, Terry, for your presentation. Um, I would reiterate what I think is pretty clear, that the design of Pine Street is in complete misalignment with the posted speed limit. That being said, I'm not sure that increasing the speed limit is the solution. Um, uh, particularly as been mentioned with a new field being built. And conversation hopefully with the DPW and expecta- or uh an invitation for them to pull together some possible solutions. I guess I'm I'm just not sure what problem we're trying to solve right now by increasing the speed limit by five miles an hour in that very limited area of town. When there are significant changes to that Upper Pine Street area that they're going to be put in place. And we're talking about maybe a bike lane, and we're talking about maybe changing on-street parking and all that. It feels to me like we're trying to um accommodate drivers who wish to drive beyond the speed limit. Um, at the risk of increasing the danger uh on that side of town, as Terry, I think, uh demonstrated with the statistics that he shared. So it feels to me like if we are gonna ask the DPW to pull together some possible ideas for how to address the situation, which might include narrowing the street. Adding a protected bike lane, that it would seem to me that we should just table the idea of increasing the speed limit until we have a better understanding of what we would like to do with that part of town writ large.
Thank you very much. Uh, go ahead and lower your hand, and um Sandy, uh, go ahead and mute yourself and state your name and address, please.
Great, um, Sandy Rogers, eighty two Old Essex Road. I want to reiterate something that Jim said, and it happens not only on Pine Street, it happens on Pleasant Street, it happens on many streets in town. Is that that the trucks are actually one of the biggest issues, and that includes um some of the the landscaping type trucks. That that includes a lot, the the delivery trucks. Um, if there's something that can be done to speak with some of the larger providers, UPS, Prime, any of the. Um, sort of, sort of the the worker trucks around town, if there's something that we can do to reinforce. Um, send something to the heads of their companies around the the issue of speed. That that would be a big issue, I agree, there needs to be a little bit more enforcement um in in different places, but it's hard to be everywhere all at once. Um, I agree with what is being said, that there should be um sort of look at the whole design of of streets. And it needs to go beyond Pine Street. Um, I think that, you know, if Pleasant is twenty five, if some smaller streets are thirty, even, you know, lesser than than than. Pleasant, I I mean Pleasant um is twenty five and Pine is twenty, and I I think there needs to be some consistency. Um, because if there's not consistency, um, to some degree, then I think there. Many of the drivers that come into town and especially business drivers that um frequent it, um, they just don't pay attention anymore. Um, so I think there's, there's a lot to look at, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments?
I just have one, I wanted to um reiterate what Sarah said about the distracted driving. That's part of the reason why I I am advocating for in that small stretch of pine, increasing it from twenty to twenty five. I can't drive that slowly, so what I found myself doing to stay within the speed limit is I use my car's cruise control. I never use my car's cruise control, except on. In order to stay within the speed limit, that's the, and I and I did that for safety reasons, so she made me think of that. I found myself staring at the speedometer instead of looking at the street. Because I I found myself going over the speed limit all the time, so I finally decided to put the cruise control on, and now I'm within the speed limit. But that's the only way I can do it, it's just too slow in that one little section from from my taste. From my ability, I'll say.
The uh, I think possible deliveries actually are gonna slow down traffic because they're looking for addresses. I don't think that that's gonna be impacting speed at all, I don't think these, the UPS driver or Amazon is flying down Pine Street. Apparently, we're slowing down looking for address.
All right, um, Jim, you'll be our last comment, and then we will finish up this discussion.
Thank you, Madam. I I think the previous speakers, David and Sandy, made very good points. Raising the speed limit from twenty to twenty five is not going to cause a bigger problem. Uh, and if we extended the twenty five all the way to Pleasant Street, it would not create more of a problem. Uh, as I've said before, it's the trucks and the lack of enforcement on the trucks. And until the police step up and start enforcing it, whether it's twenty five, thirty, thirty five, whatever, we will have a problem. Widening the road, dealing with the street, putting in bike lanes, those are all down the road and they're all good suggestions. But as I said, we have a problem with trucks going too fast on Pine Street. Early in the morning, particularly because they're making deliveries. And if we don't enforce it, it won't hap- it won't stop. If we start enforcing it, it will stop because nobody wants to pay tickets and have their insurance rate go up. Thank you very much, and I'll unmute myself.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, um.
I move that we accept the suggestion of the police department and change the speed limit. To twenty five on the section of Pine Street between Woodhole Road approximately and Pleasant Street.
Friendly amendment?
And that concurrently changing the speed limit, we monitor the speed on the road.
Friendly amendment? The the change between twenty and twenty five is a little bit beyond Pleasant, so if you, if you only change the speed limit to Pleasant, it's gonna drop down to twenty again and.
That that'd be twenty five from Woodhole to um the.
To the existing twenty five.
To the existing twenty five.
It might be easier just to say to establish the safety zone. So what you're doing is shortening the safety zone.
Let me try it all over.
Well, we've had a motion and a second, so we either have to go through and say no. Or. You do the friendly amendment.
How, okay, we, the friendly amendment replaces all of the previous, previous suggestions with. Reducing the size of the safety zone.
To extend from intersection of Central Street and extending north by, northward a quarter of a mile.
To Woodhole.
To begin.
Approximately Woodhole.
Approximately Woodhole.
To begin the safety zone at Central Street on Pine, at on the safety zone on Pine Street. To extend from Central Street for a quarter of a mile to approximately Woodhole Street.
And reverting the rest.
And reverting the rest to twenty five miles an hour, twenty five miles an hour.
You accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Brian? Okay, Debbie, do you have that?
I'll, I'll listen to it.
Moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacy, roll call vote, John Round.
I'll accept all of that.
Um, Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes votes no. So four, four, one against.
And can, and could we suggest to whoever does speed monitoring that they, when they change the signs, they also set up speed monitoring for that session? And report back to us at our next meeting.
And in addition to that, um, as Kathy has stated, uh, for the DPW to bring some comprehensive suggestions. Do we want that at the nineteenth? Or do we want to give them a little more time, do it after the?
January?
Okay, first meeting in January or second meeting?
How about first?
Let's say put the first.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. Say hi to Ann. Okay, so we will come back, first meeting in January. And I have derailed. A little bit behind here. All right, so uh discussion items, the zone, MBTA zoning. Greg, you wanna go ahead?
Um, sure, what's, or a couple things?
Why don't I, um, high level, put something out and then ask Greg to review the details, if I may? Um, so after attending the last planning board meeting, and also, uh, Ann had sent me some great information. On uh getting up to speed on the MBTA zoning requirements, um, because that's uh the goal we're working together. Um, it it felt to me like, um, there's so much work to be done, and it might be a good discussion to have to really clarify. Who's accountable for what? Um, and at the planning board meeting, I made some specific comments around um a possible three-step process for for moving forward. Um, ultimately, whatever we decide to do or not do, those decisions are made at town meeting. So the way I understand it is the the board's role here, both the planning board and the select board. Our job is to collect data and bring options to the residents so they can make their decision. And um personally, I don't feel like any of us have a well-documented. Understanding of the current state, meaning based on the current forty A law and the um. The additional guidance we received during the summertime, how close are we to complying? How far away or how close are we to actually complying? I feel like that's the first order of business. Um, and then I think the planning board needs to take the lead on what are the options for coming, becoming compliant? And, you know, they could suggest some small zoning changes that might get us compliant, and the town could still say no. So then I see the select board's accountability as. So then I see the select board's accountability as partnering with the finance committee to understand the financials. What's the contingency plan? If we can't get any zoning changes approved, we've still got things to pay for. So that's kind of how, at a very, very high level, um, I thought the planning team might be able to, you know, take the lead on some things, the select board on others. And then I sent Greg a draft, um, it's called a RACI chart. It's just a tool. Try and have a discussion. It's not comprehensive. It's not meant to, not every I and every, you know, cross every T, but it's a basis for having a discussion so we could go through a high-level process and say this person or this group is taking the lead on that and then the final observer is this board and just, just kind of have a high-level discussion. Then we divvy up the work and go forward. That was, that was the thinking. So Greg did a great job of taking my chicken scratches on a spreadsheet and, and, and fleshing out a um, a proposed set of accountabilities and responsibilities.
Good, and I, 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 I think that um what we much everyone in town would like to hear the plan being. Ann?
Um, I, I have trouble with the accountability being any place other than this like board for any of these.
Oh, okay.
The town administrator is certainly a resource and should come up with, but it's, it's the select board that makes the decision step by step. Similarly, the planning board comes up with it, but the ultimate answer to who, what goes in front of a town and how we present it is ours. And that was my, my first reaction. Um, I think we need to discuss whether there are alternatives that come, as, as you saw in, if you take um, the, the half-mile circle and, and you put in the flood zones, the historic districts, um, parks, schools.
Harbor. Water.
They've given us a discount.
They, but, but there there aren't many places, and, and yeah, we have isolated developments that are fifteen units per acre, but they're isolated. It's not a, you, you, there isn't. Yes, there's fourteen, fifteen acres on Spider Rock Hill. There's space over on Upper, um, Upper Ben, Mascanomo Street, Mascanomo Street going to the right as you go, go to the beach. Those are not necessarily neighborhoods. Maybe we could put all the latest straight over them.
But, but well, it doesn't have to be uh undeveloped land. It, it could, it could consist of existing single-family homes and
Um, most of that is in the historic district or flood.
So I, I, I just feel like I'm getting down into it a little bit and to, to Ann's point, like you're saying, so that's good. That, the chart served its purpose because, because you've got some great points about who should be accountable. My quest, I have a question regarding who's gonna do the heavy lifting of, I still think number one is very important, understanding the current state. And would that not be something that our interim town planner could do the heavy lifting and then present to us? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, and there's some assistance that the state can provide with that thing. They're doing some data as well.
So the town planner does that with Greg's oversight and then it goes where? Yeah, so that's, do, do we feel that the planning board would disagree with that? And then that's the reason I'm, I'm poking at this discussion because when I listened in on the planning board meeting, I, I think they have a desire to engage and, and
I would like to hear from them. I mean, that, that's, that's, you know, land use is their purview and I would like to hear what they have to say.
I, I, I need to hear from the planning board and also the town planner. I mean, we're sitting here, I think most of us have a general knowledge of what's going on here. But I can't go through this town lot by lot and say, alright, what's in compliance, what's not, where are there opportunities, where are there not? I understand that the town planners know and probably doesn't know the town as well as we do. I am worried about the timeline here because all of this hasn't happened by January thirty-first. With the application, the, the application does that you're, you're gonna move ahead, but nevertheless.
Another year and
You still have to have a lot of that detail in place to know where the general compliance issue was gonna go. And I understand you just have to have a plan to go, but that's not saying you're agreeing to this or not agreeing to it. You just have to have some sort of a general roadmap and we need that detail pretty fast.
I think the question is, what does the draft application look like?
It's, it's pretty straightforward. They want you to give a general timeline that shows that you're engaging the public, that you're pursuing options, that you're holding public forums and ultimately hearings and that you have a timeline that shows a vote prior to December of twenty twenty-four. So it's not a hard application to put together. Obviously, all the details are in the, in that two-year process of
But basically, the application says we are going to pursue or look into.
Looking at. We gotta look into it. We have
It's not a commitment.
It's not a commitment.
Ann, what did you wanna say?
So it's, it's a commitment to look into it. So it's not a commitment to it.
Just agreeing to to fill out that application is going to make us uncomfortable with a group account.
It will make you, yes, I agree with that.
I guess we can live with that. Um. I I have a very hard time. If we have to have the town meeting in this, by, really want to have a town meeting in December.
No, I would do it a fall town meeting, you know, November town train.
So we have
Twenty-two months by the time you get this underway.
To convince the town.
We want to find out if it's viable.
So, so
Right.
This is, I, I think that in order to, we're gonna have to have public hearings, right? With, and in order to have a public hearing, my recommendation would be, would you have zoning, so change suggestions and financial contingency plan, both. And, and so in order to do both, my suggestion is we divvy up the work. That's all.
Because we have to have the side by side.
We've gotta have a side by side. And if the planning board focused on working with the town planner on options, you know, for getting compliant. It, maybe we're ninety-five percent compliant and it's just a little tweak here or there, you know, who knows? We don't, we don't have the data.
But then we also find out, okay, if we don't do this, how, how do we propose to pay?
Right.
For a lot of big, big
Big things that are
Which, you know, I mean, it's not to say can't be done. But these are the side by sides you're talking about.
That, that's my main suggestion. It's kind of this document that we're gonna in January, we, I think we have to put in public hearings, right, as in that timeline. And my suggestion is we, we do both the zoning options, the current state, zoning options and financial contingency plan before we have a public hearing because they're going to ask about all those things anyway. You know, and, and if we're in that.
So here we are right now. So our next steps for this. What are, are our next steps?
I'd like to suggest that's my step. Yep, that we pay attention to other open town meeting towns, what they are doing. Um, because it, it, as the globe article said, this is something we may be able, we may be able to push back on.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and I think we should be thinking about what other towns are doing to push back.
Well, concurrently.
With a, a, a regional plan, you know, Cape Town plan. Uh, uh, we'll, we'll work without Congress along, uh, you know, the other three towns, cities and towns. And look at from a regional approach. And then it all happens concurrently over the course of the next twenty-two months.
What I'm hearing, if I just take some notes here, what I'm hearing is four things, well, five things. So five basic deliverables. One is, I still think it's understand current state. How compliant, how close are we to being compliant? Then um, there's, number two would be proposed zoning changes to get compliant. Number three would be financial contingency if we're not compliant. Number four would be options for pushing back and um a, against the, the law period. And number five would be a regional option.
I think four or five are almost, would almost be.
Different from ours.
Yeah, I'm with the Rockporters.
Rockport, and we have, and, and Rockport has already got sued about ours.
So I, yes. Five, did I get them?
I think those are, and, and so when we're, okay, we're talking about potential five options, where do we go right now with this?
It's not, it's five actions.
Five acts, yeah, five actions. So number one, current state. Let's just talk that. The town planner, she can do that and get us an assessment of the current state, how close we are to complying. Do we have a, an idea by when she can finish that?
Off the top of my head, I would say by the end of January.
By the end of January and you have to submit the plan by the end of January.
This is part of, this is part of
The five deliverables, that can be our plan, right? We don't have to know. Complete them by the end of January. We're just gonna put these deliverables in the plan with, with dates.
Right.
And to public hearings and
As part of that, Greg, then she also identified sites within this half-mile radius that are currently sis- uh, available.
So that, that's, that should be the current state. Well, where do we not comply?
Who are we and what can we do?
Because it's, she's matching, she's not matching what's been built to the law. She's matching what the zoning is to the law. So it could be an empty piece of land as long as it's zoned to match the law that we're in compliance.
But this law requires looking for an extra, what, three hundred and fifty units, is that correct?
Not necessarily extra. That's in total. So that's the difference. They're not saying in to, it, extra.
They, what's already built, that, that, that's that density will count?
Yeah.
Alright, well, I'm, I'm very interested in that assessment.
Right.
Nothing has to be
If, if you already meet it.
Right, and this is where
We have absolutely no zones in town with multi-family housing by right.
By right, none.
That's, well, you have, general district is all still three families.
Yes, we do. We have three units per
Three units.
Three units.
But, but in our zoning law, three units is listed and not as multi-family, in the definitions in our zoning.
So, so this is probably a good time to ask the town planner to clarify these details rather than I was gonna do it by
Right, um, Sarah, you had a comment about that?
Yes, so currently the, the zoning density in the general district is three units per lot. And the lot size needs to be six thousand square feet. The zoning could be changed to reflect the size of a lot, which would easily comply rather than
Changing it.
Rather than three units per lot, if it's a six thousand square, uh, twelve thousand square foot lot, it could be six units. So, so I think that there's flexibility there and we just need to look at the size of lots and what we already allow. And what we could tweak to make it qualify.
Okay, good. Thank you, Sarah. That's very helpful. Alright, so um number two. Who is that? Are we going to ask the planning board to look at that?
The, the changes took a flight. Right, yeah. So I think in fairness to the planning board, that's the one deliverable or action that may require a good understanding of the current state. So um, yeah, that deliverable would be after the end of January because right, because there's a dependency there. The other items are not dependent on understanding the current state of, of the zoning. We can come up with financial contingency plans. We can discuss how, how would we push back legally, um, because other towns are already doing that. Um, not sure if a region, we could probably start discussions on a regional approach. Um, so I think the only really big dependency here in the plan is the that I don't know how much work the planning board can do to understanding that current state.
So it may very well make sense to have, you know, sort of a strategy session with the planning board.
Yes.
Going forward, does this, um, is this best handled by a special pass force? Is it, you know, is it done by the planning board? Again, that's a discussion I think that would be productive.
The first first is we, we, we wanna hear from Betsy. We can get that information by the end of January. Um, the financial contingency.
So is that something we could discuss briefly next week at our meeting with FinCom? I mean, that's something that I would think we rely quite a bit on FinCom to help us understand what are the potential expenses over the next five years or whatever, however long a period of time that where we might, um, you know, need state funding or is, or just, what's the other approach we could take?
Yeah, probably take a longer time horizon in five years, just because this is but the primary primary funding is, relates to dredging, to water utility upgrades, those are the two biggest ones.
So, so um, DPW, so what you're saying are town, you might need to provide the, what we would need to spend money on and FinCom
Right, so I
The approach, financial approach. Does that make sense?
It ties up well with what we're putting together anyways, with the budgets and capital planning and
So if we can tie those into the same discussions, then reduce the need for separate meetings or
So that'll be December We can have that chat on the fifth. Sarah, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I was gonna volunteer to work with the town planner to figure out the data and work on this. I don't have the forty B, so I have time now.
Your spare time.
If you would like me to do that, I'm happy to work with her.
Sarah Malas.
It, it seems the town planner is, is a very key person.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Board is going to turn to her.
Right.
Alright.
But we need to figure out the data and the options and I think the planning board will, would want options presented to them.
I think this sound is experienced with also the zoning board.
That's right. I think that's absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, uh, so then the, the, the pushback. Do Ann? Thoughts on that one?
I thought that was something that someone who was familiar with other town administrators, right?
Yeah, this will clearly require a lot of public forums and.
Yeah, yeah.
And discussions. And letting people. Express their opinions, they, after we are able to assemble some basic facts that we can distribute.
I was, I was thinking about pushback against the state regulation.
Yes, oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I thought that we might be in a better position to contact other towns.
Yes, no, I can, I can monitor what other counties are doing, yes.
Um, I, I. Yeah, so.
And we can all do read, I mean, uh, we should be doing reading anyway, so.
And a subset of that would, ob- obviously talking to. Your counterparts here on Cape Town.
Yeah.
And see if there's an appetite to do something on a regional basis.
No.
Alright.
So then the question be timing on those last two items.
Right.
Pushback option and regional discussion.
I think those are ongoing for the next, well, plus months.
Um, okay, so let me rephrase.
Update.
When, yeah, when do we want to get an update?
Yeah.
Um. Do you think it's?
Yeah, I think you give sort of quarterly updates on.
No, actually, that's a, that's a good question. So let's talk higher level maybe. Um, how many public forums do we think we need? So if we know that we are, kind of work backwards from the schedule, so let's say September or November of twenty twenty four is when we have to have our final town meeting. If we decide to go forward with any changes, budget or zoning. Um, backtrack from that in twenty twenty four. How many public hearings would you want to have in twenty twenty four? I suspect we would want to have at least one in twenty twenty three. So maybe we kind of backtrack. Schedule backwards, right?
Probably in the fall of twenty three, we'd have enough information to bring to a town forum. So I, I don't think we. Could reasonably have a. Good amount of information prior to that, so that's one.
So public hearing, first public hearing, fall of twenty twenty three?
In the fall of twenty three, so is Brian's about ten months. Nine, ten, and then um. Depending on how close we want to get to the next town meeting. And then. I would say at least two more in, in twenty four. And, and depending on how much information comes back and which direction it looks like. People are inclined and we. Think would be the better option. What do you think? Is that set in? That's reasonable or? Do you think we might?
So I think it may require. A different approach from the standard public forums. I think, we don't need to solve that tonight.
Right.
But I should think about. Um. A series of different outreach efforts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, starting with. Of course, we have to assemble some basic. Yeah, and, and basic summaries of what the law is requiring, et cetera.
Right.
But we basically create, you know, a mini roadshow that we pay to as many different gatherings as we can.
But that are actual give and take, so that, so that.
Discussions, they're not, they're not hearings.
Right.
They are forums, they're public discussion groups.
Right.
Um, they could be from, you know, a handful of people to a room of four.
Visiting the rotary, visiting.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, sort of along the lines of, of the um. Heart and soul.
Mm-hmm.
Approach, um, that we've kicked around a little bit.
Yeah.
So are, if, if any zoning changes are proposed. Is it required that there be an actual public hearing, right?
Okay, when we get to that stage, yes.
So that, so those may be later in twenty twenty.
And that's more what I'm thinking, what I'm saying, what I'm saying, a, a formal, a public.
Correct, I understand, but we need both.
Yes, absolutely.
It's, it's, it seems that there are so many different scenarios. Jerry can come up with it. I mean, you got the compliant or non-compliant.
Mm-hmm.
And if you go compliant, well, okay, there are so many different scenarios. There can be zoning scenario A, B, C. You really have to start, if you don't present people with something, it's gonna be all over the place.
Right.
I agree.
So you gotta come out with maybe just two in that area. And then if you say, okay, we're, we're, we're not gonna comply. Then you've got a bunch of different financial scenarios. You're gonna jack up taxes, you're just gonna do the, you know, delay certain things. And there are some things you can't delay. I mean, you have to have. Two or three scenarios for that, and they have to be laid out, otherwise, again, you're gonna be all over the place. So. You know, when you go into your first forum, it seems to me you've got to have. Like four scenarios. Two on the compliance and two not, and, uh, unless, well, I'm, we're gonna learn a lot more in the next month or two, and maybe, maybe that'll.
So I think that's when we figured out.
But, but you have to look, the, the forums have to have multiple scenarios, whichever way it's going, a, a couple for people to look at.
I think it's great pointed out, we don't have to make that decision time.
We don't have to make a decision, but we do have to put enough. Detail on the action plan.
Right.
So that it's accepted by the state. So. If we target our first public outreach, whatever we want to call it, spring of twenty twenty three. That's, would that be, okay, then by January, we'll have the. The current state well-defined. Um, and a couple of options probably, so we, we need to move forward somehow, so.
Yeah, because if the planning board gets going on the, the potential options. Once we hear back from Betsy and Sarah, that by the spring, we'll have some.
Okay, is that reasonable, given the preparation needed for town meeting? I'm just. I'm asking for. That, that's one of the reasons I'm really fucking hard at the timing, because.
I say we do it after town meeting.
Right, so it's something that would get underway, you know, in, in the May timeframe.
It's gonna happen before, it's gonna happen.
Before the summer, it's gonna happen before summer.
I, I agree.
Okay.
Sort of targeting May is.
Yeah.
My mind. You know, so town meeting is first of April, so.
So beginning in May?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Uh.
So Greg, do you, do you feel we've had enough discussion around key milestones? To fill out that form? Jerry, could you draft something maybe for us to come back and look at again before you fill out the form?
Yes.
Um, and also maybe feedback from the planning board or a town planner, obviously, et cetera, but. We want enough detail that it's. Reasonable and accepted, but not so much detail that we're committing to.
Absolutely, well, it's not a commitment anyway.
Right.
Which is, so that's.
We, we are committed to some things. If we, if we give them a timeline. This is when our hearing, when we're going to have hearings.
This is, if we're going to go forward, these are the steps we will take. If we choose to go forward.
So let me ask you this, if at some point in the two, twenty-two month period, we decide, you know, something, this is not an avenue we're gonna pursue.
Right.
Okay, to your point, to your point, then.
When is the out?
Then, then we go.
But we still have to do the work on the financials, because we can't say, no, we're not gonna comply unless we fully have to, you know, have some understanding.
I mean, we're not committing to, uh, you know, if all of a sudden, there's a, this. We have looked at all the, the financial aspects of it, we listened to the town forum, and we've decided as a community, we're not gonna pursue it.
So Greg, what, what is our drop dead date?
For.
For saying no? Do we have?
December twenty twenty.
It is tw- that's, I'm just, so we're all clear.
Yeah, and, and for all of these, does this form require dates other than, we want an answer in December twenty twenty four? So, so really, you can just say, here's the process we're kind of go through, and we're not gonna put any dates on any of this stuff.
It, it's gonna be pretty general.
Fine, okay, well.
We're not making, so we can't be faulted for failing to make adequate progress on what we've committed to.
They're not gonna judge you until the.
Until December twenty twenty.
They're gonna let, they're gonna wait until they. Hear from either a yes or the deadline has come. That's what they're looking for.
There's no micromanaging there, I guess.
No, we only need a timeline for ourselves to keep ourselves on track, so we don't.
Okay, I'm gonna try to close up this, this little, are we? Are we clear on where we're going at this point, Greg?
I, I will work with Betsy and we'll put together a draft of the. Action plan, which will be shared with both you and the planning board. Um, get your feedback. Either at your next meeting or your first meeting in January. And you're ready to submit it by the end of January.
So, and then Betsy and Sarah who volunteered to help out.
In January, we'll start that analysis of current.
Hopefully to be done by the end of January. Okay, great. And then on the fifteenth, we can talk a bit about the financial contingencies. We can broach that on the fifteenth.
Yes.
Okay.
Ron has a question.
Yes. Hi, Ron. Unmuting, lower your hand and jump on in.
Or not.
Or not? You might.
Okay. Is there something else in the chat?
Uh, no, those are old.
Okay.
Alright, uh, moving on to goals, governance improvements, action item tracking. Um. Do we have, is there a form that, that, that we were going to look at for this?
Is it in the package?
Definitely.
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet in the, in the packet. One was.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Oh, there you are. Hi, Ron, yes.
Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you now.
I don't think you can hear us.
Um, I don't know if you can hear me or not, but, uh, we have that on the agenda for our meeting and, uh, we do agree with, uh. Going with, uh, Betsy's recommendations and I'd like to eh, add a planning board member to the discussion with Sarah and Becky. Betsy.
Okay.
That's.
Wonderful, yes, thank you.
Hello?
Yep.
Um. Also, I don't think it has to be continuous to the half-mile radius. I think we can go beyond that. Um, Greg may confirm that.
But some of it has to be.
Some, some has to be.
Fourteen point eight acres roughly.
Um. So some of it has to be within that file, but not all. Majority can be outside.
They have a run-on sentence, yeah. I do edit that.
Okay, is, um. Thank you, Ron. Do we still have Ron?
Thanks.
Oh, there you are.
No favor had him.
Okay, anything else, Ron?
Uh, no.
Alright, wonderful, thank you. Okay. Um, so we have our. Um, sample agenda draft. Um, are we, it was this to change from the current form that we're using? Is that the thought?
So suggestion here was that as part of the chair's opening remarks, that there would be an update on. The action items.
Yeah.
Um, I, I personally don't think we need to list it in the agenda. I think it's a sheet that would be added to the packet.
I agree.
Just, I, I just think it's gonna make the agenda heading a little busy and.
Yeah.
And cumbersome. Uh. But, but I think it's important to have that as, as the first page in your packet after the agenda. Uh, and that.
Yeah.
It spells out, you know, what the items. What the items were and what the next step is or has been, what's, what's the status.
So this would be an addendum to the agenda.
Perfect, basically.
But rather than addendum to the agenda, it's page one of the packet. So it's not necessarily. Doesn't have to be printed with the agenda.
So I think the, so Susan and I worked on this with Greg, and I think the, um, underlying principle is. That at the beginning, the, the action item tracking spreadsheet that's on the second page here, um, that's a living document. And.
It's small.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're correct, right, yeah, you, you don't have to put the action items in the agenda, but the action items are used to formulate the agenda items, right? Because you don't want to forget to do that. And I, I believe Susan was suggesting that at the beginning of the meeting. After the chairman's report, we review outstanding actions. So you don't have to have them in the agenda, you can just refer to the spreadsheet, it's the first item in the package. That way, everybody can give an update on their actions. And we don't lose track and things don't fall.
That is such a good idea. Once.
And, and then.
And then that's the very end of the meeting.
Yep.
Any new action items will be summarized.
Right.
Add it on that, good. So.
And then, yeah, so Debbie put together this spreadsheet here. Um. And she can, she can maintain that.
Could we, could we?
Take a picture.
Have it in she fingerprinted.
Yeah, absolutely, that was, that was my fault. That was my fault.
Yeah.
I tried to shrink it down to a page and I didn't think of it properly.
And Debbie, just one other suggestion I had sent to Susan was to, um, on the, the spreadsheet up at the top, should have an as of date.
Mm-hmm.
To reflect the last time it was updated, because based on this, um, the sample that's here, it looks like this was updated, uh, November eleventh, right? So you want to have an as of date and that would be it's clear. Um, but it's got all the right information in there.
Excellent. I think that will be.
So, so then the question would be, if we agreed to use this, um, have this change in our process. Uh, Debbie, do, do you need some help filling it out? Because there's stuff that's not here.
Yes.
Okay, okay, so this, is this what you have captured based on revealing?
Just what I came up with, just the last couple, just to think about it. So there's definitely more.
Right.
Definitely put that down. I would love the help.
Okay, alright, so then maybe. We can all take the action, you send Debbie any outstanding actions that we know of.
Okay, excellent.
Right, thank you.
Bye, today is Monday, can we do this, um. By next Monday?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh.
I see where you want to do this.
That would be.
Oh my god, just that's.
How many fingers do I have?
Twelve?
Should be twelve.
Yeah.
I can do that one.
Okay, um. Are we good on that? So.
The agenda will look more like a regular agenda.
Yes.
And except that the first item after. Where it now says tax classification hearing, it would be, um. Next steps or.
Well, so I would do it as part of the chairman's report.
Yeah.
That'd be my.
It's just part of the chairman's report?
I, I, I understand that, okay. It's part of the chairman's report.
It won't be listed on this. In the packet.
Yes.
Okay. Fine.
We can say chairman's report and action item update.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, W, are you gonna be maintaining this like on our SharePoint? Um. Repository or?
So we can, we haven't, we haven't talked about that as a group, but we certainly could establish.
It would be nice if this was on our SharePoint and as part of the package, you just have a link there to the document as well. I mean, certainly, I, I think it's great to include it in the package, but if we don't have a meeting for three weeks. And Debbie adds some actions, et cetera, it'd be nice just to go, be able to easily get to that living document wherever it is.
But I do think it should be in the.
Yes.
Packet as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah.
But SharePoint is good, because we'll come up with something. I wonder what's going on with this.
Yep.
And you don't want to send it out, if you, in fact, go on there and say, oh, Debbie's already. And you don't wanna send it out, if you, in fact, go on there and say, oh, Debbie's already got it on there, I don't have to worry about it.
Right. On the other hand, I don't like having to go to SharePoint every day and see what's somebody just added. So if you're going to add something, send the email. Yeah, if you wanna just put yes, as long as we're not saying, and give me feedback. No feedback. You look concerned.
No.
Okay.
No, no, I mean.
Issue.
SharePoint can be set up so that anytime that file is updated, it automatically, yeah, but that can easily be done and no extra effort.
Right, anything else on that topic? Okay, um, unless somebody has a burning desire, we can put liaison updates for next time. Okay, here is a oh the school committee, um, budget meeting, and I think it's in the fourteenth of December, I don't remember, I think there is a.
There'll be a public, um, meeting to present the preliminary budget.
Yes.
On the, I believe it's the fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth, yes.
The Tuesday.
On Wednesday.
Wednesday, the fourteenth.
Next Wednesday at seven.
And, and since that's half our budget.
Yep.
Yeah, something that'd be interesting.
Uh, what's the date, the fourteenth?
Yeah.
So that's in the, in the library after high school, middle high school.
And it's available hybrid. Okay.
What time? Seven.
Uh, next up, we have consent agenda, did anybody need anything pulled out of that? I, I have an issue, a minor issue with with the minutes, um, and I'm frustrated on bringing it up, um. According to the minutes, I was supposed to come back with something on the application process, and I was waiting for information on what other towns do. And I, I slipped my mind, who was, who's action item. But though, I don't want to put together something and then have somebody come back and say, oh, well, that's not what I'm going to have to do. So whoever, and I, I afraid that this is, as a matter of fact, I'm active in writing on mine.
Yeah, I think, I think we did volunteer to do that, I have not done that. Sorry, I apologize.
If you, if you could look in, uh, okay, fine, yeah.
What was it?
We can do a, we'll do a quick, quick ask of what others are doing.
Oh, that was on the, um, okay, it was.
Is it on the town meeting?
No, 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 it's a fitness policy.
Yeah.
Um, and we discussed a bunch of things, and I said I would come up with new verbiage, and I think I said I would like come up with new verbiage after I get information.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other amendments to the, uh, minutes? Any comments or questions on anything else on the consent agenda?
Something just, just to run through, just.
Okay, the first one is approval of the minutes, and we've had the modification, or the amendment. Then we received the resignation letter from Gary, the official resignation letter from Gary Gilbert. Uh, so we now have that vacancy on the planning board. Um, which we.
So again, we would encourage anyone interested, certainly submit a letter of interest. Uh, within the next couple, three weeks, you would aim for a joint meeting with the planning board um, uh, early January.
Should we put something in the project?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll have, we'll have, definitely get that out.
Okay, so given that the planning board is a rather technical board, as we've discussed in the past, would you be including some type of expertise requested specifically? Sometimes we don't do that for the other committees, et cetera. I'm just throwing it out there.
I think the interview process is pretty, uh.
Application.
Oh, application has that. But I mean, guys, sometimes in the posting, we're looking for these types of people.
I'm looking for, are we looking for an architect, so Gary, is an architect.
Yeah.
Someone with planning. I, I think someone with general planning, I, I, I hope that anybody who would apply for a position on the planning board would have reason to think that he had planned to go to help.
I, I think if we're specific, and maybe that would be in, you know, Greg, before Tiffany publishes something in consultation with Ron as to is there a particular skill set, you know, uh, not only what Gary is, is, uh, now, uh, you know, removing from the board, but is there some skill set they wish they had and, and they don't, it's a good opportunity to flush that out.
Okay, we had a, um, a proposal to, uh, increase the fees, uh, at the Chowder House, um, which hasn't really greatly been done in some time. And then the bike ped committee vacancy, uh, as well. I didn't follow that at all. The bike ped? I know, you need to just go to the last one, just the last, so they, they. The person who is not showing up is Amy. Correct. Amy Coleman, and they haven't been able to get ahold of her. Right, it has come to my attention that Jay has yet to take his oath of office. But, but that's, that's.
Superb issue.
That's separate, we're just, just go to the very, I know, we, we, we got, so this last one dated the twenty-eight. Oh, okay. The last one dated the, this is the first one. Will be, yes, the most recent, just that. That's the most.
I was gonna ask the same question.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's not just difficult to figure out which is.
I know, we got a lot of information. Unless you read the base, don't realize that there, this is. But like, basically, this, this most, it's the most recent ask is to note that there is a vague, one vacancy on bike ped left by Amy Coleman, who has not been in attendance, nor has she responded. So we just need to, uh, advert that as well. Anything for discussion on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by the zippy John Round.
Well, if you don't, it's thirty miles an hour, don't mind me.
Why not? Just don't follow me.
Twenty-nine.
Okay, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace, Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yeah.
Becky Jake says yes, now we have our town administrator's report.
Okay, so we'll have the, uh, preliminary budget ready to present to you on the fifteenth of December, that'll be a joint meeting in the finance committee, as we discussed earlier. Um, so it really marks, uh, the beginning of the next phase, but obviously, there's been a lot of work up until now, or with department heads, one-on-one, and looking at their requests, and trying to balance things out. Um, so we'll put the preliminary budget, um, together in the next week, and have it ready for you um, for presentation on the fifteenth, and then it's on to uh, you know, line-by-line reviews and, and discussions on some of the bigger issues that, that, um, we're, we're facing in that budget.
When will we be able to have that?
So you'll have the budget in your hands that night.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, you know, if you, if you want to, a couple days ahead of time.
Yeah, can we, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Certainly do that.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So, um, so that'll be presented, uh, as I indicate, uh, staffing and public safety is probably the biggest issue we're, we're facing with, with this budget. So there are some important decisions that will need to be made regarding, um, moving forward on staffing numbers, or those, those three, harbor, police, and fire. Um, also, if, if there's time on the fifteenth, it would be helpful if you and the finance committee can uh, discuss the ambulance and what your thoughts are about proceeding, as you know, about meeting a food um, money to either repair or replace the old ambulance. Uh, so if there was information that you would find particularly helpful, um.
I'd like to know, is there, is there an estimate to repair?
Yes. Yep, we'll have that for you. And that'll be part of, part of the package.
Is there perhaps a a third route, um, because I think what the town thinks it's paying for is five-minute response time. Um, and we don't get that when the ambulance is taking patients to the hospital. Um, and is there, is there something that, that isn't a huge ambulance with all the stuff necessary to be in, in a fire? And the, the, the current ambulance is an enormous truck that could get paramedics with a person with enough equipment without, without waiting two more years.
The, the problem is one equipment, so, so the big rigs are big because of fully equipped for the paramedic services.
No, I mean, yes, but some of the stuff around the outside is, is fire gear. So that the people in the ambulance can go into a fire.
I'm not sure how much of that is there, but.
So, and you're.
No, they don't have upsides.
Right, Boport doesn't respond to fires. I think that's where you're going, right?
You're asking, is there another vehicle type option?
Kill gun vehicle.
It's a kill gun vehicle that we could get somewhere. And, and, and.
So let's ask that question.
Yep.
Right there.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah. Well, I just had a long chat with. Did you? Oh, two weeks ago. Oh, okay. All right.
So that'll be again on the fifteenth, that discussion, um, uh, governance work continues, uh, Susan Beckford meeting with the numbers department leaders this week. So we'll be updating you on that. And then lastly, uh, as I think all of them know, Ken Reel is retiring from the Chamber, Kipan, Greater Kipan, the Chamber of Powers, and, um, there's a reception for him, uh, next week. And it would be, uh, very fitting if you were agreeable to finding a proclamation on his, his work. Uh, so if you're agreeable to that, we can have that ready for your signature.
I think it's great, and, and remind me, is that a five to seven, is that what they said with presentation at?
Thirty-ish.
Three.
Yeah.
And that's why we're bumping our meeting to seven thirty. If it can come. And Brian will present that.
So that's ahead for you.
Okey-dokey. All right, any other comments or questions, concerns? Right, if that's nothing, uh, at eight fifty-four, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wow, that's first.
Okay, moved by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison, roll call vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes, thank you, and that's a wrap. Good night, everybody.